Go ahead and call the August 25, 2020 regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. Would you please join me in a moment in silent purr? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm number A, Mayor's Minute and Council Comments, and I will start as I have for the past two months and just remind everyone once again, you know, while there's some progress may be made in the community, we still need to be very vigilant. And I would encourage everyone to wear a mask when you're indoors, to social distance when you can, and to make sure to wash your hands because just in this past week, our schools have opened back up. We want to make sure they stay open, and we want to make sure that our businesses stay open as well. So please do what you can to help keep our community safe. Does anybody have any comments? All right. City Manager?
No.
No comments. All right. Matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items, and Ms. Marnie, I think you wanted to speak at this point?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the City of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. Gentlemen, at the last council meeting, there were two items on the agenda that were gone through so quickly, I don't remember any discussion or explanation about either one of them. One of them involved, I think, I believe it was a $600,000 supplemental or something to the city and 190-- you didn't say this, I know it. $191,000 of that was to go for the legal bills for this lawsuit with BDU. Now, what my question is, there was no discussion about that. Where did that money come from and what else was it to be used for besides $191,000 for legal expenses to help defend us in court?
Do you like to answer that, Ms. Marnie?
Ms. Marnie, that was carryover monies from fiscal year 20, budgeted but unexpended, and from the City Attorney Department from fiscal year 20, budgeted but unexpended.
All right. Do we know at this point beyond the $191,000, do we know other specified uses or is it just there to be used? Do we know that?
It was allocated into professional services to be used in that department this year.
As needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Now, secondly, at the end of the agenda, there was something called consent. What did you consent to? There was no discussion, there was no nothing, it was just run roughshod. Now, gentlemen, the reason I'm asking this, I'm the public, and the City Council is spending the public's money. That's my money. I happen to think I can spend my money better than you can. But nonetheless, as long as this City Council, any City Council, is spending the public's money, the public has every right and reason to know what it is being spent for and on. What did you consent to?
Ms. Marnie, the consent agenda is on every agenda that we have, and typically it deals with purchase requisitions or maybe meeting minutes. I can't think of an agenda that we've never had a consent agenda. And this particular items last week, it was $34,000 for an HR software program and then roughly $140,000 in police and Sheriff's Department vehicles.
Well, I know there were several vehicles involved with the Sheriff's Department and I think the Fire Department, and I really know what it was spent for, I just wanted to hear it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, I think we should be extremely careful in this, in this particular part or any part of the agenda because remember, you are spending the public's money. I'm the public. They're the-- no, you're not the public, and you're not either. Well, there's some other public out here. But you are spending our money, and we have every right and reason to know and understand what it is being used for. We may not like something on that consent, but we need to know it's on there. So I will ask you to please exercise great caution and don't get in such a hurry that you start skipping over things we might need to know. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. That was the only person that has signed up, but if anyone wants to speak to a non-agenda items, we have quite a few for the public hearings and other things, but, okay. If not, we'll move to Item D, adoption of the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Clerk, call her.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley? Yes. Okay. Item number one, public hearing for the draft revised zoning ordinance and maps. At this time, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open, and before we do, Ms. Morgan makes some comments. Just to remind everyone, this is a public hearing. The Planning Commission had one last week, as well as an open house to get feedback and comments from the public, and we're not taking any action on these items, we're just wanting to hear comments from the public as we move forward. And so with that, Ms. Morgan, if you want to present the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council Members. We did have a public hearing on this matter before the Planning Commission on August 17th. That was following a all-afternoon open house so that folks could come in and ask questions and look at the maps. What I didn't do at that public hearing is give a little background, so I thought I would, because I think it's been a while since you all have, you know, been updated on where we are on, on this process. So some of these slides, I'll try to run through pretty quickly, but please, you know, if citizens have questions or you all have questions, let me know. And I want to make sure we have enough time for everyone here that's speaking, obviously. But as far as what we're doing and how long we've been working on it, this shows the objectives that the Planning Commission went into this process with and has been working now for almost three years with multiple work sessions, addressing the actual code language, which is Code, City Code, Chapter 50, Article 2. There's 16 different chapters, so it's been a time-consuming process, but it's been a needed process because there are a lot of, as you can see, things that we wanted to accomplish. So the current status of the document, the first draft was done in July of last year, and then we proceeded into work sessions with the Planning Commission on the maps and then some joint work sessions in the fall with the Council. Then in January this past year, this current year, we had open house sessions, I think, afternoon and evening, so that, again, people could learn more about what we were doing and provide any comments to us then. And we kind of, with the pandemic, had some meetings canceled, et cetera, so it took a little while to get all the input that we had gotten into what is now the current draft, which is dated June 15th, and that's the one that's, that you all have in the public hearing on here. So just, again, just to refresh your memory, some of the changes in the text of the ordinance were organizational things, things to make it a little easier to, to read and interpret, updating a lot of references, revising the floodplain management chapter, streamlining some of the processes so that we could, you know, better administer the ordinance. And there's some examples there of what some of the changes were in the text. Implementing our comprehensive plan, of course, that was kind of the whole impetus to get us started, so some things that were recommended in the plan are now in this proposed document, historic overlay district and the flexible redevelopment district. And then we did some changes on the RT townhouse. We added about accessory dwelling units in R2 and R3, and we didn't get to landscape regulations, but there's a place to add those later. And then a lot of time spent on sign regulations, making a readable chart for the uses in each district. We addressed agricultural uses and residential zones and dealt with some of the language in the telecommunications tower chapter to make it a little easier to understand, so. So the map, map seems to be often what we get more questions about. It functions as part of the ordinance. So the map changes that the Planning Commission is recommending forward have to do with several different things, and this is just a summary of them, but a lot of places where our zoning boundaries didn't match parcel lines, and so parcel might be what we call split zone. So we wanted to try to eliminate those problems as much as we could. And then here's some of the summary of some of the changes on the land use map here. Adding the new districts, one I didn't mention before was just the rail zone, which is all the property owned by the railroad, creating a zone for that. There were some places where small commercial areas were proposing go from B3 to B1, some residential lots in Solar Hill from B3 to R2 to match the neighborhood, but then also adding more B3 zoning, excuse me, and Exit 1, around Exit 1, and also along Euclid Avenue in a two-block section that is currently B1. So leading up to the public hearing, any properties that were being proposed to be changed, we sent letters to all the landowners. That also included all the landowners in the historic district overlay. That was 621 letters went out. So again, August 17th was the Planning Commission open house, public hearing, and then tonight, you all's hearing. We are going to have to have another joint public hearing at your next meeting. We advertised everything correctly in the paper and sent the letters out, but we just didn't post the agenda for that like we normally should, so we just want to cover all bases and have a subsequent public hearing on the 8th. And then after that, the Planning Commission will take all comments and consider their recommendation back to you all. So that's, just wanted to give you a little update on where we are.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Marnie. Okay. We'll go ahead and have the public comment. We have quite a few individuals that are signed up, and just remind people, if you, for those of you that aren't familiar, when you come, you have three minutes, you can follow the lights there. When the light turns red, when it turns yellow, you're about out of time. When it turns red, try to finish up your sentence or thought so we can move on. I do know that we do have one individual that's representing the neighborhood, and kind of as usual, we allow that person a little extra time since they're representing multiple individuals. So instead of having multiple people come up and take the three minutes, we just give that one person a little extra time. So when he comes up, he can do that. All right. So we'll go ahead, and the first person that signed up was Bob Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I know that Mr. Farnham and Mr. Eads heard me at the public meeting. I'm an attorney in town. I gave each of you a packet. I don't know if you had an opportunity to review it yet. I'll try not to repeat myself much from that, but I represent Richard Osman seated back here. He and his wife own a piece of property on Old Avenue Highway at 845 Old Avenue Highway. You'll probably have a hard time from here seeing where this property is, but there is a copy of this aerial map in your packet. The Ball Corporation is in this part of the picture. Old Avenue Highway comes around with the creek, and Mr. Osman's property is located right in this corner. And in the packet, I included some correspondence that he obtained before he purchased the property, showing that it was zoned B3. And there's a copy of that letter from the city date December 8, 2009, saying it was zoned B3. Probably the most significant thing, in your packet, you're going to see a picture of the interior of his property. This property is basically designed to be an automobile repair shop. It has a metal slab with a mechanic's pit. The mechanic's pit is designed so that you can walk down in and get underneath a motor vehicle. It's specifically designed to be an auto repair shop. When he bought the property, auto repair shop is one of the things that he could use it for. Under the proposed zoning, it can't be used for that. The building is designed for that. He has spent substantial sums improving it. It's been rewired. There's a new roof. He did an interior ceiling, all with the city's blessing that it was B3. And one of the things that some of the people there brought out, this particular piece of property, where it's located, is perfect for an automobile repair shop. There's land beside it that can be used to park cars. It's got a garage door for the garage, for to come in the garage. It's also got a side door for patrons to come in the building. I mean, that's what it was built for. I recognize that if you look at the land use map, they would like for there to be some residential area up in here. If you look at the property, this is a cliff. There's no way that you're going to build anything there. So frankly, right now, what it's being used as, what it has been used as, is automobile repair, and that's what it should be zoned as. And I'd be remiss if I didn't advise you all that Ms. Morgan has done a wonderful job explaining to me this whole process, how it works, because this is not something I do regularly. But she did point me to something in the land use plan that I wanted to read, and I'll stop at that because this is the basis of it. It says, "The land use plan is intended to be a general guide to land use, planning and development within Bristol, and it's not a development plan of rigid and finite recommendations." Basically, a man is as invested as money, and it should not be rezoned. Thank you. Thank you all.
You dropped something, Mr. Ward.
Mr. Mayor, I think I should jump in really quickly and just say for the record, since this is the first I'm hearing of this, the person that he represents has the same last name as me, but we're not related in any way. I know I got, I got to look her too, so I have no connection to this.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next on the list is Richard Osman.
Mr. Ward just spoke for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Bill Lancaster.
Thank you all for letting me come in to speak on behalf of me and my wife. We live at 248 Robin Circle, and our backyard joins Southern State's. That's why I'm here. We had a letter stuffed in our mailbox from someone in the neighborhood about all of this possible rezoning, and then subsequently, Ms. Morgan happened to be coming by a few days later, hand-delivering, and me and her got to talking. We had actually talked before about a separate issue, letting me know about all this, which I appreciated her bringing it to our attention. Me and my wife have been there four years, homeowners, well, us and the bank, and in four years, our property tax has gone up twice, our garbage has gone up. We've seen the Falls look like a desert wasteland, a cabbella's leaf, money being spent there. We've seen businesses disappear on Linden Drive. We've seen a tract of land on Lee Highway across from Dollar General behind Verizon that was supposed to be developed into something. We've just seen one thing after another that's been spent and just not worked out or vacant property. And now, all of a sudden, our buffer zone, which we're perfectly fine having Southern State's behind us because we're at Exit 7, two minutes from everything and two minutes from the house, but it looks like we have a farmland behind us because of the type of business they do. It's great to sit out on our back porch in the evening and be able to enjoy that. It's an 18-acre tract of land, and there was the subject come up that there was a gentleman's agreement that there would be a buffer there, and I noticed that there was no, no proof of that. Yet, my neighbor, John Salyer, lives right next to me, just recently, he was wanting to put a fence up on the back, and he went and talked to the manager of Roger Reynolds at Southern State, and this is literally in the last month or two, and he said, "Well, I'm wanting to take some of these trees down when I do this." And he said, "Well, we're required to keep a buffer zone, Southern State's is. So you can take some of those trees down if you want to and let them fall on our property, but we can't. That's up to you." So there is some sort of agreement that this manager would tell that to the guy that lives next to me, okay? We looked at the requirements and everything, and I mean, it could be anything from a, to do this FRD development and everything, and it could be everything from a 100-foot hotel, but there's also stipulations with special permits that it could be manufacturing, and it could even be higher-end manufacturing. We are investing in our home, in our property, and we don't want something else put behind us when you've got all of this land up there that the money has, the city has invested in that just looks like a war zone. I mean, at least, you know, up at the Falls, get rid of all that dirt and put grass and put a sign up, we'll redevelop. So it at least looks nice. Make some kind of effort to use the other land, not take something buddied right up next to a residential neighborhood and turn it into another development that may quite possibly go down the tubes. And I've got more to say, but I'm out, but I just wanted to make sure that me and my wife, as residents that literally are back line, meets that. And 10 or 20 feet of buffer is nothing to, you know, just basically run what we've invested our, our lives in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lancaster, for your comment. Next is Kenny Isely.
Hi. My name is Kenny Isely. I was here at the last meeting. I've been talking with Sally Morgan and emailing her and stuff. I have a piece of property at 1221 Rhode Island Avenue. This building was a commercial building, what was built. I now, it's been several businesses in there. It was, when it was built in the 70s, was set up as a machine shop. I know Magic One worked out there, and now I've moved my business into it, and that's the reason I bought it. I've spent a lot of money on this building. There's two lifts in it, and it's basically the same thing with Richard Osman. It's, it's basically used for cars, but it's, you know, I need it to stay as a B3 because it's not a residential piece of property. That's just basically long and short of it. And I showed, I showed Anthony last week pictures of the building, that, I mean, it's just a commercial building, is what it is, and I'd just like, you know, to keep it as that. Okay?
All right. Very familiar, you're at that location.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Mr. RL Light.
Well, I don't want to take up too much time, and I appreciate, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, this time to speak to you. A little bit about my background, I'm RL Light. I live at 509 Euclid Avenue. I spent nine years on council, so I know sort of what you're going through. During that time, I served on the Planning Commission, First Tennessee's Virginia Development District, Mount Rogers Planning District, Joint Planning Commission. Since then, I served two terms on the Planning Commission that ended in 2012. I say this to show you that my interest in planning and particularly in the Bristol area. Lonnie Whitley asked me my opinion regarding the Southern State's property and the apparent problems not buffered in some way, and it piqued my interest in the comprehensive plan and its application for now. I find the plan well researched and presented for the time it was done, but we've had so many changes in the last few years that I see something that was only somewhat of a side issue in the plan that is now, in my opinion, a large opportunity. People are living in the large metropolitan areas, are going to the suburbs and to the rural areas in great numbers, and it's being reported generally. This, I believe, offers Bristol and the surrounding areas great opportunity to attract particularly retiring seniors. Others seeking, I believe that other, that offers Bristol's surrounding areas great opportunity to predict, to, I'll get it straight in a minute, to invite seniors in and others senior, seeing a more relaxed lifestyle. Most of the people, of these people have extra money and are looking for a retreat from the hectic, big-city life. This area was ranked number two in one of the Armed Forces magazine some time ago, and our main holdback was proper housing. The criteria used by most to rank the retirement area falls in five areas. Health facilities, we have nearby a VA hospital, a medical center, and major hospitals in each of the three cities. Recreation and entertainment, we have hunting, fishing, golf courses, parks, racing festivals, and many specialized entertainment centers. We should be within 100 and 150 miles of a major city, and Charlotte and Knoxville fulfill that. Reasonable cost of living, we are very much below what these people would be looking for. Appropriate and good housing, and that's the one place we fall short in. As you can see, we only lack the appropriate housing, and many remedies are referred to in the comprehensive plan. These recommendations need to be enacted and put in order, in order to assure the outcome envisioned by the plan. There are many suggestions of how to solve the problem financially. One is to offer incentives to develop-- One is to offer incentives to developers and contractors. The study says this would pay for itself through increased taxes. Banks are now starting to support residential loans and may be involved with the developers. I sincerely believe that we could become the catalyst for the development of time and area that could result in beneficial and attracting money that could ease the financial condition we find ourselves in. What makes me feel so sure of this? When I was 30, I did an architectural thesis on housing for the aged. Since then, I have kept up with the planning, and I've continued to be involved. Now I'm 87, and not only know intellectually what it means, but now I know for sure what it means to be elderly. I do urge you to consider what our area has existing naturally and can provide for our needs and others if we think about this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Light, and thank you for your past service to our city as well. Next on the list is Mr. Lonnie Whitley.
Is there anyone else to speak along the circle that can wrap it up?
Ms. Marnie. She want -- Ms. Marnie's next on the list, but...
My name is Lonnie Whitley. I'm a resident of about 18 years, at 117 Robin Circle with my wife Jeanette. We're property owners there. And as I had petitioned the commission last week, I'll say again to this council, and I understand, I think it's clear, there will be no voting on this plan tonight. It'll come at a future date, which we're grateful for, a little more time to discuss this. And like some of you have said to me in phone and private conversations, we'll make sure we get this right. I think all the citizenry want that, and I think the best agreements or plans are the ones where everybody agrees. And we've had problems in the past with that. I don't think we're going to have a problem moving forward. But I did want to give some clarity. I have learned over the last 48 hours that there are some Robin Circle residents that do not support -- I've only heard from three that do not support our position. I didn't plan to speak in behalf of this subdivision. I was a part of a group about 10 years ago that addressed several projects before this council successfully in behalf of that community. And my understanding is the majority of people in that subdivision still have that same position. But understanding, as I said in the letter that was handed out to all, I think there's 132 resident property owners in that subdivision, my position was to respect what has been a long-term arrangement. I know the city manager had addressed that certain arrangements or agreements need to be recorded, but I think the best recording is what it's been for 53 years. It's been both a B3 and an R1 piece of property. And it's a significant amount of R1 that you're considering rezoning, infringing, in my view, up onto the Robin Circle existing subdivision. I'd like to remind this council, personally, I agree with some of the things RL Light said, and do recommend that the council and the Planning Commission slow this down to make sure we don't have an opportunity to do something that's really beneficial for the city long-term and is compliant with what the majority of these citizens want, and that is possibility of a PUD, a planned unit development, where the site is planned out completely. And both the citizens that have R1 and the citizens that may claim a B3 zoning would be in agreement with that before it ever became a vote or up for approval. And the plan, the tentative plan, is to come up against that R1 zoning and do some luxury housing, phase it down eventually into multifamily housing, phase it down eventually into maybe business down where there would be a pond that encompasses Beaver Creek that helps with the flood control problem. That would be positive for the city, the community. And then some businesses there by PALS, if we can address the PAL traffic that backs up out on the Lee Highway, even after the city gave them new real estate. If we can address that, we can solve a lot of problems there for future business along that entry. Now, I had no citizens until today inform me that they did not want to support, and they've done it with signed petitions, I think I presented about 40, to the mayor tonight, that their position is still the same. They see no need to rezone it this time. They are in support of a master plan. I mean, any responsible citizen would want to support a master plan. So in the future, we don't have to visit this every six months or every two to four years. It's been visited four times since I've lived here in 18 years. And before that, you know, I was here for about 35, 40 years. There was a citizen, I don't know if he came tonight, that signed the petition that had been here 53 years and witnessed the handshake between Mike Hilton's father, who owned the property out at the front of Robin Circle, the Little White House that we refer to, and the Southern States leadership team that is all retired or they deceased. That's been passed on for about 50 years. I mean, that's something weighty, and when the zoning recognizes it and has not been any attempt to try to modify it up until this last three years, I think it's weighty, in my view. After all, you know, our governments, we need to be reminded of this. I'm reminded of it. I occasionally look at the Virginia Constitution and look at the federal constitution and realize this is about a representative government, and it's not representing primarily corporations. That came later. It's primarily and initially representing individual citizens. And I think you'll get input from citizens. I have to listen to the disgruntled ones as well as you do, but I think when we listen, we hear better and we make a better plan. So I would submit that we support this citizen group, though it's not officially reformed as it was in the early part of '09, '10. If need be, it would be reformed, but their position is not to rezone, that at the very least establish and vote on, so it can't be changed later again, an established buffer zone, though it may be less than what there is now, that will forever be there until somebody wants to buy the whole tract. Because this keeps becoming a problem. And I'm wearing out gym shoes, yet talking with people. So I'm here primarily first to say that I support it, that I support a PUD, which I think, long-term resident, all the data shows, we're a prime candidate with all the services for people retiring from big cities, but we've got to have the properties and we've got to upgrade the existing ones we've got. And that's going to raise the tax base. Everything in Bristol does not have to be commercial. And then finally, I want to say this, to reemphasize my point about listening. When I first came here 18 years ago, I didn't want to move here. I'll be honest with you. I saw the sign, "It's a good place to live," and my opinion of the area was different. I come from a very, you know, successful area. The city I lived in was laid out by the Quakers in the late 1700s, and the streets go from ABC all the way to Z and northwest at an angle, and 1, 2, 3, all the way up to 100, and you knew where you were in the city. And there was a overseeing group that was recognized by the existing, and continues to this day, current government, that took the input of those, what they call forefathers of the development of that particular community I lived in. And over the years, it benefited everybody. It brought in the businesses they needed, it brought in the improved developments, projects, industrial projects that they needed. They don't have the problem we have here in Bristol, because it was well-planned. Now, I'm not blaming anybody when I'm saying this. I'm saying 18 years ago, when I came here, I had an earful in about two weeks of people grumbling and complaining about this and that all the time. I was embarrassed for the city, my wife, and I actually wanted us to move. And there were reasons why we should have. Some of you know the history of some of the things we've fought for in behalf of the citizens in the past. But we didn't, because we saw that there were people, some were not informed properly of the issues, some couldn't attend sessions. You had a session last week, 1:00 to 5:00. Most people are working. I mean, the only people that attend 1:00 to 5:00 is somebody that's retired or takes off or has a special position when they get off. And I'm not saying you haven't done thorough work. I believe the Planning Commission you have now is excellent. They've listened to our concerns, they've actually changed the map that was from 2007 that was adapted, and where some, a particular developer was trying to infringe upon the subdivision, wanting to change those opening lots coming into Robin Circle to B3, and thank God, they listened, and they're now recommended to be R1 again. We congratulate you on that. We just say, listen a little further, because there may be two or three that have a different opinion, as a position, the overall opinion is the same. But the man that did the gentleman's agreement was Mike Hilton's father. He was the former plant manager at Southern States. All the old timers, you talk to anybody that's been there 40 years or more, they know the same story. And I think if we're going to do a flexible redevelopment zone, we've got to enforce a buffer. Because right now, on the south side of Robin Circle is Commerce Drive. And on Commerce Drive, there was an arrangement that there would be a buffer down the side with landscaping, and believe me, I walked in the storage building parking lot, and I walked in some of those property, the part of the property that's not developed, because they don't have enough frontage to put lots, and you can see right into the neighborhood, people's backyard. So if we put these rules in there and we don't enforce them, it does no good. So I think we can solve something that'll help us here, provide the pro-development here, and we're open to a multiple zoning, flexible zoning. But there has to be an understanding that there has to be a buffer, and if you wait a little bit, there might be a PUD plan that comes in that I think we all appreciate, that would enhance the city, help Exit Seven, it would solve some of our flood problems, because we could build a reservoir there, a reservoir could be built to collect some water. I think, long-term, it'd be a better plan than maybe what we've got right now. But I said that the people grumbled and complained, but I felt like, after about six months, I felt like the prophet Ezekiel. If you remember the story in the Old Testament scriptures, he was taken by the hair of the head, and he was set down among the people. Well, Ezekiel didn't know. He's just a guy, right? Apparently, he had long hair. But what was interesting, until God set him among the people, he didn't really see what the problem was, and the problem was the priests in the community. So I say, in the past, we've had some great leaders. RL Light is an example. He's a model leader for this community. He might be the last manager that had no debt and a balanced budget and wasn't trying to borrow tan money, but that's okay. It was a different time, right? But what I'm saying is, once I sat with the people and I heard their real issues, and that's my plea today, I heard a different story. They need help. The citizens need government. I'm telling you, we need government in Bristol, but we need to make sure we listen to them. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Whitley. And as you mentioned, you did, and I've got a copy here, I'll give to the clerk or the city manager, Ms. Morgan, whoever wants it, and they can make copies for council if they want to see, have a copy of that, who all signed that petition. Last person that signed up, Ms. Marnie?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. Whose job is it? Whose job is it? Whose job is it to determine whether the conditions agreed to or imposed upon are being kept? Whose job is it? Who's being paid to do it? Too often, there are conditions that are attached to changes. There are conditions that are agreed to that may or may not be legal, and often, they are not enforceable because they are not legal. Now, I too am a former member of the Planning Commission. I know how that works, and quite frankly, I remember some of the issues, particularly the first gentleman who spoke up here. I was here when that was talked about. Now, gentlemen, I have been coming to these meetings for 40 years. I'm not the new kid on the block. Forty, four, zero. I know how we've gotten here. I could give you a list of names. I think that in terms of whose job is it to see to it that conditions that have been set forth are being met, they have been done, they are being carried out. Now, this, in my mind, involves definition of terms. For instance, if a man over here has a piece of property and it has one sign on it, and somebody, the zoning commission, somebody says, "Well, we want to do this and do that and change the zone." Well, you can't do that, because that sign is grandfathered. Now, here's the question, and here's the problem. If that sign is grandfathered, does that mean the entire parcel is grandfathered? I say no. But you have to get into definition, and that will also lead you to interpretation. Just because one sign is grandfathered, it does not mean that the entire property is grandfathered. Now, we need to get some clarification on some of these things. We got into that over there on the old airport road with that car shop, that god-awful used car shop, next to the storage lot, and the gentleman who spoke first about, and RL mentioned it, and so did Lonnie, about the area behind Southern States. I remember when all that was discussed, and I know the neighbors were very, very upset. The residents up there were terribly upset at what was being thought about. Now, you have to remember, people, if we know what we already have, what's already on the books? I don't know that anybody really knows, because we have had such an incredible upheaval in the last 10 years or so, and changes were made and stupid, dumb stuff was done, and oh, my Lord of mercy. But my point is this: We need to know what we have now. What do we have in hand? What's on the books? Now, by knowing what we have now, this will help determine what will come. We have to know what we have, otherwise, we're going to get into conflicts and misrepresentations and get back to reinventing the wheel and getting nothing but a flat tire. We do that a whole lot, you know? And we've got to define the terms. We have to know, what does grandfathered mean? What are the limits? How far does it go? What was the original agreement? What does it say? What did the city attorney agree to legally? We need to know all of this, because this will determine what comes next and what we can do. Now, I think it's very important for us to know that zoning and codes are two of the only things we have to make plans for this city and keep order. Zoning and codes are two of the most important things we have. Be very careful. Now, two more points I will make here. With zoning and codes, this will determine whether I have a tattoo parlor on the other side of my house. This will determine whether the mayor has a Dollar Tree on the other side of his house. That is zoning and codes. That's what that is. We don't need any more low-income housing. We need upscale housing. If we'd been doing our job as a city, we wouldn't have that need at all. And the social services department would fit just about right here in front of this podium. But we didn't do our job. Now, I think one of the biggest issues of all is the biggest investment most people ever, ever make in a lifetime is in a home. The biggest investment most people ever make in a lifetime is in their home. Now, this city has the power to... home. Now, this city has the power to determine whether you're going to destroy that, or whether you're going to make it a positive. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Marnie. And that was everyone that had signed up. If there's anyone that would like to speak, and didn't get a chance to sign up, you have a comment to make, Ms. Morgan, before we close the hearing?
I wanted to just say for the record that I did receive six emails. And I would, in interest of time, instead of reading them, make copies for you all. But they are all from residents of the Robin Circle area, opposing the rezoning, basically all opposing the rezoning, excuse me, to the FRD, from what it currently is owned.
Okay.
I think, I think all are addressed, Robin Circle, and five of the six are, and one is Green Valley Road, which is nearby.
Okay. Yeah, if we can make sure their minutes reflect that. All right. Before I close the hearing, again, I'll just reiterate what Ms. Morgan said. You know, this has been a long process. The planning commission's done a lot of work. They had a public hearing. She had an open house. We have a public hearing. Now, we need to go back, kind of think through this. We're going to have another public hearing next month, and probably, if not at that meeting, at some point, maybe it'd be good for us to sit down in a joint meeting with the planning commission, and be able to talk through some of this. They, they've heard some things that we've heard. We've heard some things they haven't. Hopefully, we can sit down and work it together, and then come up with something that, that I think would be good for the city as a whole, and bring that back sometime in the fall for us to do. But there's been a lot of work into this, and I appreciate everybody that's put the work in so far. I appreciate everybody that's taken the time tonight to come and share your thoughts as well. So with that being said, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to item number two, a public hearing for a supplemental appropriation of $2,463,749. Ms. Bradlin?
No.
Wait a minute. Let me open the public hearing first. Now, staff report.
Mayor and members of council, this item is a public hearing for supplemental appropriation of $2,463,749. Two million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. The public hearing was advertised in the August 18, 2020 Bristol Herald Courier. When you amend your budget by more than 1% of the adopted budget, a public hearing is required. So the, the agenda item this public hearing is about is the supplemental appropriation. The appropriation includes general fund appropriations of 168,000, including VDOT reimbursed maintenance carryover of 128,584 dollars, Clear Creek Golf Course carryover of 39,416 dollars, community development block grant funds of 159,013 dollars. These are federal cares monies awarded to the community development block grant fund outside of our general fund cares money. Asset forfeiture fund, additional federal asset seizure funds received during fiscal year 21. Believe the AIS says fiscal year 20, and that was a typo on my part. I apologize. These monies are for fiscal year 21. 535,018 dollars. And then school operating fund appropriations of 1,601,718 dollars, made up of 1,125,839 dollars of School Cares Act funding, and 475,879 dollars of 21st Century Grant funding. No local monies are involved in the school operating fund appropriation. It is all the cares money, and then the 21st Century funding.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bradlin. We have one person sign up for this public hearing, Ms. Marnie?
I think I'll finish.
Okay.
Please.
Somebody else would like to speak, even though she's the only person that signed up? All right. No public comment. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And now we'll move to item number three, the supplemental appropriation of 2,463,749 dollars. Staff report.
Mayor and members of council, this is the supplemental appropriation that I just described. The item background is on June 23, 2020. The Bristol, Virginia City Council adopted the fiscal year 21 budget. The listed items are an additional appropriation to the original budget, and staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed.
Okay. Again, public comment. Ms. Marnie, you signed up. Did you have any comment during the public hearing? You have any now?
Mr. Mayor, I just signed everything, because I had worked in a situation that I'm having to sign up, and I always thought.
Well, that's fine.
So I just said, put my.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, I asked you every time then. Did anyone else have a comment? Maybe came in late. Okay. No public comment. What's the pleasure of council?
I move to approve the supplemental appropriation for 2,463,749 dollars.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Osborn, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say to the CFO, thank you for the work you've put in on, on getting all this organized. And how well I know now that if it's more than 1%, you have to have a public hearing. So thank you for the work you've done, and for breaking this all down and explaining it in detail for us.
Any other comments?
I would like to congratulate the school system on that 21st Century grant. I know in the past, they've, they've tried to get some of those federal funds. So it's always good to see those awarded, in addition to the cares funding. With that being said, Clerk Colwell?
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. Item number four, authorization to disperse from Fund 35 COVID Act, or Cares Act COVID-19 Fund. Yeah, I think that's right.
It is, Mr. Hartley. For some reason, that printed wrong. That presentation of fiscal year 20, fourth quarter finance update should, should roll, should follow after that.
Okay.
On the agenda that's printed, it's correct. But for some reason, it was printed wrong.
All right. So this is the authorization to disperse funds?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's authorization of, yeah, dispersed funds, and then you'll have the staff report, public comment.
Yeah, okay.
And then the presentation to follow.
So staff report?
I'll go ahead. And the city of Bristol has received federal funds accounted for in Fund 35, the Cares Act COVID-19 Fund. These funds are to be expended per federal guidelines, and are required to use costs incurred, and are required to be used for cost incurred by December 30 of 2020. Due to the nature of the items to be purchased with these funds, cleaning supplies, PPE items directly related to COVID-19 mitigation, once the required documentation of quotes information is completed, these items need to be ordered as soon as possible. The current purchasing policy of the city requires council approval before, before a purchase order can be used, issued for items that cost in excess of 15,000. This time delay can result in items no longer being available for purchase, or significant cost increases of the items. The city needs to move expeditiously to, to purchase these items. The expenditures for this fund differ significantly from normal operating expenditures of the city. Items will be presented to council for appropriation. The required documentation of quotes will be completed. CFO and the city manager will review all purchases in excess of 5,000 dollars prior to purchase. And council will approve the dispersment of these funds for the previous month at the first meeting of each month. That listing will be provided. And staff recommends that council approve dispersments from Fund 35, the Cares Act COVID-19 Fund, which, which is required to be expended by December 30 of 2020, for the previous month at the first meeting of each month.
Do you have a comment, Ms. Marnie?
No, but I, I am in favor of a monthly review of all these funds. I think everything should be accounted for. Everything.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment from the public? Okay. What's the pleasure of council?
I move to approve.
Again, we have a motion by Councilman Osborn, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Any discussion?
Yeah, I need clarity on this, in public also. This authorization here is for the city to be able to purchase larger quantities of COVID-related supplies, and things of that nature. Am I correct on that?
It would, what this does is, it allows the city to purchase things that we've already presented to council. I believe the first meeting was on July 28 or August 11, when you all did appropriate certain funds for PPE supplies, and other types of cleaning supplies for the city. All this does is, it allows us to go ahead and purchase that without having to get council approval prior to purchase. You've already appropriated the money, but in these times, everybody's attempting to buy the same things that we're buying. And if we don't purchase them when they're available, by the time we come to a council meeting and ask for permission to purchase them, those items may not be available. Or if they are available, they may be more expensive than what they were two weeks ago, whenever we were getting ready to order the items. So we're not going to spend any more than what council's already appropriated for certain funds. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but say, $50,000 was allocated for PPE supplies for City Hall. We wouldn't spend more than $50,000 for PPE supplies for City Hall. It's just allowing us to spend up to that amount, and come back the following month, and show you exactly what we spent on, what we spent those funds on. And basically, what it amounts to right now, there's just a backorder on everything. And if something's available, we need to be able to purchase it right then and there.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, you know, when I looked at these expenses, I, you know, I know, I know we need them. You know, COVID's, you know, something we got to deal with. But when I looked at the expense of some of these items, like the temperature monitoring equipment, you know, that, that's an expenditure, that dollar amount, when you divide the total dollar amount by the total units bought, it's extremely high, extremely high. So most companies are, you know, they're buying little infrared guns, right? They'll, they'll shoot your head, $150, you know, $150, $200 range. And you sign in, you sign the documents, and that's it. You know, so to spend thousands of dollars per unit for, you know, the kiosks and stuff like that, we, you know, I just, I just can't get comfortable with that. That is, that to me is just spending money on things that's extravagant. Okay? So we need the basics, right? Yes. But we don't need to overdo it, right? So let's not try to spend money just because we've got the money, right? That's, that's what I'm trying to say. You know, I know we're given federal money, but it's still our money, still taxpayer money, right? And we still have responsibility to spend it smartly and wisely, right? And no, I don't want to hear the story of, well, all communities want to spend. No. Communities and, and governments have responsibility to spend it very wisely, and not waste our taxpayer dollars. Because one day, we're going to need it on something important. So that's the biggest issue I got here. I think, you know, we need some of the equipment that's in there. We just, we just don't need the type of equipment that's specified. I mean, even, even some of the computers and stuff, where we're overdoing it. You know, that's not, you know, all you got to do if you're working at home is answer email. Could be a very basic, very basic laptop, right? You don't have to run CD-ROM. You don't have to run, you know, CAD packages on it. You know, you can really come down to bare bones, right? So I'm just saying that we need to back off and spend it wisely, but don't overspend. And we shouldn't be spending this money to this extent on these things to this level. Show us the quotes. Go ahead and quote those infrared temperature guns. Give us the min, the max, the average on the open market. You know, go survey who's bought what, you know, you know, get a, get a good idea of the landscape before you, before we go and, and let those purchase orders go, those purchase orders go. Because what I saw seemed to be really, really on the high end.
So to clarify for all of us, and for the people listening at home and here, so all of these funds have already been appropriated by us previously. This is just for you all to be able to spend. If there's, if you find something that's a good deal, you need to buy it, and not wait two weeks before it sells out for us to approve it. Correct?
Yes, sir.
And this would only, the only ramifications would have would be on these specific funds, and it would set no precedent for any other funds that would normally come to us for approval first?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then just for clarification, this is $15,000 and up. You, the city has authorization to order 15 and below without council approval. But 15 and up, this is what the city is asking for.
That's right. For this specific fund, it's only related to Cares Act funding. You know, I would say that this cares committee has been working on these projects since, I think, June 10 was their first meeting, I think. And we've looked at prices. We have met with different vendors. We have quoted, I mean, all the documentations in the agenda packet when it comes to what we've done in order to get the lowest possible price for these items. You know, I understand that the cost of some of these items may seem high, but unfortunately, that's just the cost of what these items are right now. And in order to abide by, really, the Virginia OSHA regulations right now, some of these items are necessary items that we have to have. It's, you know, we don't have a choice. If an employee would happen to get sick while at work, and it could be tracked back to the fact that the city of Bristol was not doing, not abiding by the OSHA guidelines that were set out by the Commonwealth of Virginia, we could be fined by OSHA, and then probably be set up for a nice lawsuit by the employee or the employee's family in a worst-case scenario. So, you know, I completely understand Mr. Mumpower's point, but we have discussed this, I think, at every council meeting since mid-June, if I'm not mistaken, in regards to, maybe not in June, but I know we have in July and August, in regards to these cares funds. And council's had plenty of opportunity to voice any concerns about that.
I'll just say, you know, one thing that makes this a lot different, that, one, as you point out, you have a lot of people trying to go after the same things at the same time. But also, with the way the cares money is, is set up, that you have a, a date that you have to expend those funds. So again, everybody's kind of rushing away, instead of waiting, and it doesn't give you a lot of flexibility that you'd normally have. So, you know, I have no issue with that, because we do need these items. And as has been pointed out, we've already talked about these and appropriated it. It's just to give you the flexibility to go ahead and order them while you can get them, and not have to wait. So.
All right. With no further discussion then, Clerk, please call the role.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. All right. Item number five, the presentation of the fiscal year 20, fourth quarter finance update. Ms. Bradlin?
Yes. Mayor and members of council, this is the finance update for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 20, data as of June 30, 2020. This data is prepared on a cash basis. Revenues the city received, and expenditures the city paid. This is unaudited data. The general fund summary with a budget of 57.9 million, revenues of 56.9 million, 98% of budget, expenditures of 53.4 million, 92% of budget, for a fund surplus at June 30 of 3.4 million. Solid waste disposal fund summary with a budget of 8.2 million. Revenues were 8 million, 98% of budget. Expenditures were 6.6 million, 81% of budget, for a fund surplus of 1.4 million. Capital projects fund with a budget of 11 million, revenues of 3.6 million, 32% of budget, expenditures of 2.1. budget, expenditures of $2.3 million, 20% of budget, for a fund surplus of $1.2 million, made up primarily of prior year VDOT receivable monies received in fiscal year 20. This fund does have a cash balance at June 30th of $462,580. The large budget variance here, meaning what was budgeted versus what was expended, expended is related to various road projects that were not started in fiscal year 20. The Transit Fund with a budget of $468,000, revenues of $582,000, expenditures of $390, for a fund surplus there of $192,000. That as well is made up primarily of a fiscal year 19 revenue received in fiscal year 20. So that is a lot of numbers up there. What I've tried to show here is of the fund surplus, what has council already appropriated to carry over. And the largest piece of that is the debt service reserve of $1 million, and the, the school carryover there of $225,000. So these are items that council has approved or are before council tonight totaling $2.2 million, $2,241,350, leaving a fund surplus cash balance of $1.2 million, or $1,235,078 to be exact. So here's the general fund revenue summary. Of the $56.9 million received by the general fund, $38.6 million is from local sources, $15 million is from state sources, and $3.2 million is from federal sources, a small amount of other financing sources to total the $56.9 million. Total revenue from local revenue sources at June 30th was 101% of budgeted revenues. This is what our general fund revenue looks like, what monies the city's received in its general fund. The blue, our, our local revenue is at 68% of total revenues received, it is 66% of budget. The state is red at 26%, it is 28% of the budget. The federal is there in green at 6%, and it is 6% of budget. Other financing sources, primarily in fiscal year 20, was the reimbursement from CDBG, it was less than 1% of budget. If you all will remember, that is reclassed to recovery costs going forward. The general fund revenue report at June 30th, 2020, general property taxes at 104.78%. That is very significant for this June 30. Delinquent collections for the year showed a substantial positive variance. Other local taxes is at 98% of budget, once again, very significant for this June 30th. The city of Bristol entered the last quarter of the fiscal year with strong budget variances. Permits and privilege fees is at 65.67%. This budget variance is due primarily to building permits and inspection fees being below budget for the year. Fines and forfeitures at 48.93%, that is due to a shortfall in court fines primarily related to the traffic program. We did anticipate this to be a shortfall for, for fiscal year 20, and this item was reduced in the fiscal year 21 budget. Revenue from money property is, is at 164%, primarily driven by the interest earnings for the year. Charges for services is at 94.88%, miscellaneous 87.84%, recovered costs 84.37. This was down this year, if you all will remember, due to the loss of the reimbursement from the Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Program. Those, that fund is no longer allowed to reimburse our general fund for certain expenditures per the federal government. State revenue is at 92%, federal revenue at 96% due to the timing of certain grant expenditures and social services state revenue. Other financing sources, 5.21%, small portion of the general fund budget, but trended downward because those receipts are recorded as recovered costs now. Financial data graphs, the red is fiscal year 20, and then it goes backward from there. Local sales and use tax was down from fiscal year 16 and 19, but up from fiscal year 17 and 18. Consumer utility taxes held steady for the year. The cigarette taxes are up from fiscal year 16 and 18, but down from 17 and 19. Lodging taxes are up from 16 and 17 and 18, but down from fiscal year 19. Meals taxes up from fiscal year 18, but down as well from fiscal year 16, 17, and 19. This is what our sales tax revenue with a budget of $3.6 million looks like as it is received by the city. The blue is the three-year average, and the orange line is fiscal year 20. Sales tax runs two months behind, meaning that revenues received in June were for the month, were for the month of April. This is what our lodging tax with a budget of $1.3 million looks like as it is received by the city. Once again, the blue is the three-year average, and the orange is current year data. June collections in this category are for the month of May, and this graph clearly shows the impact of COVID-19 on the lodging tax in the city. This is the city's meals tax with a budget of $5.4 million as it is received by the city. This is the city's largest other local tax budget category. June collections are for the month of May, and this graph shows as well the effect COVID-19 had on meals tax revenue for the city. This is the target revenue report, total negative variances here of $55,000. I think council is used to seeing positive variance totals in this, on this report. Sales and use tax had a positive budget variance of $91,624. Consumer utility tax had a slight positive budget variance. Taxes on records and wills had a slight positive budget variance. Cigarette tax had a positive budget variance of $19,965. Lodging tax had a negative budget variance here of $42,000. Meals tax as well had a negative budget variance for the year of $99,000. Electric consumption tax had a slight positive budget variance. Admissions tax had a negative budget variance of $15,000. Communications tax had a negative budget variance of $22,000. We did reduce the budget for fiscal year 21 for communications tax. It is more in line with the actuals for fiscal year 20. So for comparison purposes here, at the end of the third quarter of fiscal year 20, we entered the last quarter of the year with total positive budget variances here of $610,000. So we can see the impact that COVID-19 had on the city. Here's information that compares what estimates were used to develop fiscal year 21 budget compared to actuals for fiscal year 20 and an actual for July of the current fiscal year. Sales tax were reduced a full year by 10%. You can see the actuals here. Keep in mind, they run two months behind. April actually showed a 5% increase from the prior year. May down 4%, June down 7%, and July down 4%. Meals tax was reduced a half year by 50%, which equals a full year of a 25% reduction. And you can see the actuals here for April, 37% decrease, 42, 41 in May, 20% in June, and then 20% for six, 26% in July. Lodging was reduced in the current year budget by half a year, at 50% for half a year, which once again equals a 25% reduction for the year. So you can see that April, negative 53%, May, negative 80%, June down 27%, and July down 53. Then you can see the admissions tax and was reduced half a year by 70% as well, and you can see how those numbers are, are coming in, or the last quarter of the fiscal year, and then for July. The general fund expenditure summary for the year, government administration is at 77%, judicial administration at 84%, public safety is at 92%, public works was at 104%. And that was entirely, that overage was covered entirely by state monies. Health, welfare, and social services 96%, education 96%. If you remember, the schools held off on some of their fiscal year 20 appropriations, realizing what was going on with COVID-19, so that they could use some of that to roll over in fiscal year 21. Parks, recreation, and cultural is, was at 89%, community development 89%, non-departmental 90%, debt 82%. And the reason the debt is at 82% is because we budgeted for fiscal year 20 to set aside $1 million that was unexpended, that council did commit in June of 2020. Transfers at 95%. Total expenditures through June 30th were at 92%, which is how the city was able to have a surplus at June 30th. March 13th, very important, the city manager put the city on essential purchases only. We felt like we were ahead of the revenue decrease for the city of Bristol in response to COVID-19, and the departments of the city, once again, really did their job here, resulting in a positive cash balance for the year for the city. This is what our general fund expenditures look like, how the city's money is spent. The data on the left is the actual expenditures, and the data on the right is how we budgeted expenditures for fiscal year 20. Actual general fund expenditures, public safety at 27%, health, welfare, and social services at 16%, education 12%, public works 11.78%, debt 8.68%, transfers 5.85%, government administration 5%, judicial administration 3%, community development 2.58%, non-departmental 1.47%. And what hopefully that council and the public is able to see is that even during the COVID-19 pandemic, the city's structural budget held. Even as we paused expenditures, we still allocated money, expended money, how council had determined they wanted that structure to be set. The Fall's Phases Two and Three update, we present this information quarterly. Here you can see budgeted revenues for the year were $826,700, actuals 799,281, for a slight negative budget variance there. You can see the debt allocated to Phases Two and Three of the Fall's, $2,43,241. The revenue sharing payments of $350,000. So we budgeted for a deficit of $1.5 million, and we ended the year with a deficit of $1.5 Transitioning to solid waste, revenues of $8 million, 98% of budget, expenditures of $6.6 million, 81.19% of budget, for a fund surplus of $1.4 million. Carryover of prior year monies to put toward the cost of the liner were $652,000. Also, prior debt proceeds were $497,303. So of the $1.4 million, $1 million was prior year carryover earmarked for the liner costs. I will just mention here significantly that the liner, except for the debt carryover of the old money that we had to spend, the remainder of that was purchased with cash. And when you look at the historical records for the city of Bristol, I'm not sure when the last time that happened was. Disposal revenue were 92%, down somewhat because of the loss of a key contract. Collection revenue was 102%, non-operating revenue 103%, up slightly due for some state monies we received that were actually for the prior year fiscal year 19 landfill study that we did. Disposal expenditures 74, 74.52%, down primarily because the liner cost less to install than originally budgeted. Collection expenditures 80%. Keep in mind, with the fund, the solid waste disposal fund summary, 30% of the entire fund budget is for debt. This is a lot of numbers, again, I, I tried to make this as, as big as, as I could, but there wasn't a column I felt like that could come out for presentation purposes. So here's the information of the city's upcoming debt schedule. I've been asked by members of the Finance Committee to present this information quarterly so that decision-makers on council and the public see this information regularly. This is citywide general obligation bonded debt backed by the full faith and credit of the city of Bristol. This does not include any potential future refinance savings. What you can see here, I hope, is the first two columns is the citywide bond payments will increase to over $7.5 million in the next several years, and the shortfall related to that increase. Then detailed out is the refinance savings and how that will be used in the current and upcoming budget cycles. You see a positive here of $115,931 in fiscal year 21 net payment. That's a result of the May 2020 debt refinance, and we, we left those funds in the, in the debt service reserve for fiscal year 21, because we had had to pull a piece out to cover potential Series A shortfalls for one year only. So that gives us a net payment of what, of which a portion of the $1 million annually budgeted for reserves will have to be used at that point to pay the debt, and that begins in fiscal year 22. Then as the revenue sharing payments expire, these monies can be used toward the debt escalation. The unexpended debt service reserve funds that council committed in June 2019 and June 2020 totaling $2 million will also be used to offset the escalating payments. So that's a lot of numbers and a lot of explanation. What does this schedule really tell us? What it really says is, under the current debt service budget plan, the plan funds the debt service into fiscal year 25. Very important to remember that fiscal year 21 budgeted reserves set aside will get the city into fiscal year 26. This is the city's current debt service plan through fiscal year 27. Now, I will just say that what in the past, I think Mr. Eads would agree with me, looked impossible, now is manageable, and we have a written plan. The cash balance information, the TAN expired in December of 2018. It is not in the fiscal year 20 budget or in the fiscal 21 appropriation ordinance. The operating cash balance at June 30th, 2020, $19,166,022. One year ago, at June 30, 2019, the balance was $19.9 million, but keep in mind, there were no funds in CDs at that time. Two years ago, at June 2018, the balance was $14.2 million. Three years ago, $7.4 million. Currently, at June 30th, the city has three CD balances, the emergency reserve $1.4 million, CD II had a balance of $1.68 million. The treasurer did send the additional monies committed by council in June out in July. She had to wait till the, the rollover of the CD to get those in there. And then the CD III, the solid waste disposal fund, debt, debt reserve type, $143,389. The TAN information here, 1617 was the last time the city utilized the TAN, it was utilized in the Fall only. 1516, $2.4 million used on the TAN, 1415, $6.7 million. And then in 1314, you can see that the city was borrowing $7.6 million to pay its operating So the operating cash balance is $19.166 million. Carryover items, which I showed on that, that slide earlier, of $2.1 million. Very important here also is liner accrual as, as of 630, 2020, $596,342. That is a success for the city of Bristol. So we back that off of the cash, and that gives the, that brings the total cash balance down to $16,456,914. And there is the CD balances. Also, very important, the liner accrual, we were not able to budget any monies in fiscal year 21 for that, so very important that we were able to enter the fiscal year with almost $600,000 there. And this graph shows the city's cash balance at month end. The gray line is the current year, the orange line is fiscal year 19. year, the orange line is fiscal year 19, and the blue line is fiscal year 18. This is operating cash, not the CD balances, which is why the gray line is just slightly below the orange line from last year. Keep in mind, this is the balance at month end. It does vary during the month, but you can see the curve here. Also, you can see it was below $5 million in July of 2017, which was the first month in fiscal year 18. This last slide details the progress the city has made in the last three years. This progress has been achieved through fiscal discipline and adherence to financial policies, even during challenging times. The information on the left is from fiscal year 17, and the information on the right is from fiscal year 20. Operating cash, fiscal year 17, 7.4 million. Operating cash balance, 19.1 million today, not today, but June 30th. The draw on the TAN, fiscal year 17, 1.7 million. Fiscal year 20, zero. Funds in reserve, fiscal year 17, zero. Funds in reserve, fiscal year 20, 3.4 million. Unassigned fund balance, 8.3 million fiscal year 2017. Unassigned fund balance, last audited fiscal year, 16.3 million. That was last audit. We anticipate that number will increase for fiscal year 20, but we're not there yet. Interest earned in the general fund, three years ago, $0. Interest earned in the general fund for fiscal year 20, $250,725. Principal paid on debt, three years ago, $190,000. Principal paid on the debt for fiscal year 20, $1,280,000. Credit rating, three years ago, BAA2. Credit rating at the end of 630, 20, A3. Two, two level improvements. Council, that concludes the presentation of the financial data as of June 30th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spradlin. Does anybody have any questions for her or any comments?
Yeah, I just got his comment. That's a very, very good report. Congratulations to Randy, you and the team. You've done a very good job of managing the finances. 19.1 million on hand is incredible from where we came from. I mean, you would never have bet on that horse five years ago, right? Ever. We're at 19 million. So it's, it's interesting that we're in a better place, right? But on the flip side of the coin, we've got to be very cautious, right? So if you go back to those graphs, you'll notice the, the cash pickup over the last four years has, has turned now. We went from 14 million to 19.9, and we slipped back to 19.1. We really should have been at about 23 to 24 million. So if we were on the same projectile, right, on holding expenditures tight, creating cash, we'd have been around 25 million. So that's something to be concerned about, right? We've got to be careful as a government entity, overspending in the good times, because I'm telling you, the good times do not last. And we got lucky this time because we had cash on hand when this COVID hit. Imagine if that would have hit back in 2013. Just imagine, take that, just think about that for a second. When we had less than 5 million on hand, and that would have hit back then, right? And that, those are real world situations, right? You can't control that. So you've got to play every day, like today might be your last day, to play that card. And I think we're getting a little bit loose with our money. I'll just say it right up. I think we got a lot more to do to get more conservative with our spending, because we are still over $100 million in debt. We're the most indebted city that's ever been in southwest Virginia, right? And we can't take that lightly. We are not in a safe pasture until we pay that debt down. And I mean pay it down hard. I don't mean pay it down a little bit. And everybody thinks about the casino. Well, maybe. You know, that's still to come. You got to take today as what you know today is, right? So we need to talk to Davenport, which I think we have, right, on what else we could do to save more money on the refinancing side, right? Because we've got an opportunity now. We ought to request another look at our credit rating. We ought to ask Moody's and Standard Poor's to credit rate us again, see, see what, I think it's positive. I think it'll, I think it'll shed positive light on the city. And then look at how we can refinance our debt in a very aggressive way, because interest rates right now today are as low as you'll ever see it in several centuries, right? It will never, it'll never go any lower, right? So you got to take the opportunity right now to take the cash you've got to pay down your debt hard, right? And so we need to challenge ourselves to get the rating agencies to try to look at us quickly, see if we can refinance as much debt as possible. Look at how we can cut costs more. I think the department heads are doing a really good job. I noticed all the departments. I was going to slam Wallace a little bit, but Public Works is up, but you know, look what he did, look what he did on the cash pay for the liner. You know, that, and it costs less money to put in. So everybody's doing a good job. Everybody's paying attention to the ball, right? And you got to pay attention to the ball when you're $100 million in debt, right? The Falls is not developing. It might develop when the casino hits, who knows? But we got to assume it's not going to develop. We got to assume that 2.5 million or whatever that number is every, every year on debt service is real, and it's going to stay real, right? And we got to be ready for that. So, so the other thing is, I think we've got to look at solid waste harder. We kicked that puck around a little bit, and we couldn't come to any agreement on what to do. If you were in the business, if you were in a private enterprise doing solid waste, you would not be doing what we're doing at the solid waste dump. You just wouldn't, and that's a fact. We've got a crew for the closure. We've got money. We, I heard accruals, yep. We've got a crew, we've got a crew for that closure, right, of our, of our landfill, right? That's got to get on the books now. Probably double accrual, right? You got to double crew for it, because that, that expense needs to be accounted for, because that's floating out I don't know, overall, good job, but it's a, it's a, it's a good job with a warning, right? Pay attention, because we still got work to do.
So I'll say something. Just thank you all for, for what you've done. I, I took a picture of this slide so I can write it down when I get home. If you look at, at the immense progress that has been made over three years, you know, it has been, you know, it, it's a lot. It's a lot that's been done. And, and it is a testament to, you know, members of City Council before me and Mr. Farnham were on here to make some, some ugly decisions that may have had to be done. And then, you know, in the past couple of years, we've been financially responsible for what we've done. We, we've loosened the belt, you know, more than some people would have liked, but we've, we've kind of tried to keep it in line. So thank you for what you all have done, and it's a lot of hard work. And I think the numbers, as you said, it looks kind of scary when you start seeing the numbers from the COVID times and the shutdown. When you start seeing that come in, it, it looks kind of scary. But, but I think we're on the correct path, and we do have a plan, as you said. And I don't know about you, but it makes me feel better when we have a plan, when we have something written down that, that says, you know, we have a large debt, but we're finding a way to manage it. You know, it's, it's still a scary number, obviously, because we have a finite amount of money and a finite amount of people, and you can only tax people so much. So it's, it's still scary, but we have a plan in place, and it is manageable. So, so thank you all for, for what you do.
Yeah, similar to, to what you all already touched on, it, it is impressive, some of the numbers, especially when you look back over the last three years, but also in particular, when you look at the time we're in right now with the COVID-19 pandemic, and we really didn't know in March and in April, you know, what the numbers will be looking like at the end of June. So, and I, I think that's just a testament to the strength of finance, management, and that trickles down to department heads and employees here in the city. And I've said it before, I'm optimistic about where we're going the next year, the next few years, because of our plan. So I, I just, I really appreciate it, the work you all do for the city.
Again, looking at, especially the way we ended the year, I would not have thought we would end the year like that in March. I mean, and, and I think it's, it's been said, it's truly a testament to what y'all did, the actions you took as management, as finance, but really every department head, everybody, you know, making sure to manage those expenses so we would be in the best possible place. And while there's, it's not all good news, of course, but, and there's a lot of uncertainty moving forward, there is a lot of good news in that report, particularly, I am very impressed at that last slide. I think that's something that shows, you know, the fruits, we're, we're beginning to see some of the fruits of our labor. Doesn't mean that we've got there yet by any stretch of imagination, but as others have mentioned tonight, we do have a plan. We can continue, I think, to move forward, although I think being cautious is, is good, because there's a lot of uncertainty. But, you know, if we stay steady and, and we, we can get there. So I appreciate the report, and I appreciate the work that you and every, all the department heads, everyone has done to get us there.
All right. Next item on the agenda. Would you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, these types of numbers could not have been accomplished without the financial leadership of our CFO. She has the ability to predict what's coming in the financial world and take advantage of opportunities that, quite frankly, I might miss, and that other people might miss as well. And I'll just be as blunt as I can be. If anyone questions what she says that we need to do financially as a city, you probably ought to rethink your position either within the city or on city council. She, she knows exactly what she's doing, and we're blessed to have her, because I can sit here, and I remember three years ago, sitting here as a newly appointed city manager, probably getting about four hours of sleep at night, wondering if this city was going to survive. And I can't tell you the number of hours we spent on the phone at night trying to figure this place out. And to be where we are right now, I would have never dreamed it. So hats off to Tamara, hats off to department heads, hats off to council, because it's a team effort. We still have a long ways to go. Even the New England Patriots try to get better every single year, and I hated to say that, but, you know, we continue, we have to strive every single day to get a little bit better, and eventually we'll become that championship team that we all want.
And I'll add to that. I think Tamara's done a great job. I think, Randy, you hit it. She, she's really done a phenomenal job. I can remember back when she first got hired, right? That's before you became city manager. She was nervous as a cat around a rocket chute, right?
She was.
We started looking at those financials, and you could just tell she, she couldn't stop shaking her head going, what have I gotten myself into? And I said, it'll be okay. I mean, it'll be okay. We'll get there. Don't worry about it. It's going to be tough, but we'll get there. It can be worse. You could be going bankrupt. We'll get there.
And she gets mad at me when I tell her it can be worse. So be careful.
And then the time, and then the time we met out at the Corner Market, out on Reedy Creek and whatever that road was.
Yeah, we signed the TAN.
She called and said, I've got to have this TAN signed within the hour. And I said, I thought we were going to get off the TAN. What do I need, what do we need to sign a TAN for? And she's like, you're going to sign it, right? So now she started getting more nervous again. I go, I'm going to sign it. Let's come out here. That was, but you know, you can laugh about it now, right? It wasn't easy, right? But, but there's still more work to do. And you'll still get questioned, no matter what that guy just said, right? You're still going to get questioned. But it's going to be in a good way, right? We're trying to offer different ways of thinking about things, right? So if we can all take in that grain of thought and do what we've done in the last four years, I mean, imagine we could do the same thing in the next four years that we did in the previous four, and we wake up with $40 million of cash on hand. We have just taken care of almost 50% of our debt in less than a decade. Now, who would have thought you could ever do that without, without developing the Falls? It's impossible, right? But you're, you're, you're able to do that. You can see it's, it's possible, right? Good job.
Just want to add one thing about the credit rating. Back in the, the spring of 2017, it was BAA2 by Moody's, but it was outlook negative. And then we did a little work, and the outlook became, it was still BAA2, outlook stable. And I'll be honest, we, we celebrated that. Then it was outlook positive. And then it was last fall that they raised it two levels. So really following the financial policies that, that council has put in place, you can see the path there. I just wanted to point that out.
And I'll also add that-
Tell them the questions you got to ask in the boardroom in New York City with Moody's sitting across the board table. Those weren't easy questions, were they?
No, and, and they really provided a roadmap of where we needed to go.
They wanted to know. They wanted to know how this city management's thinking. They wanted to know what your plan was, right, for saving money. They ask all the right questions, because Moody's is not going to rate you unless they got confidence that you're going to stick to your guns, right? As soon as they get any indication, you're slipping. They'll let you know. I promise you.
I, I'll just add that we do have calls with Moody's and S&amp;P on September the 15th in regards to our credit rating. So we've already scheduled that.
And when?
September 15th.
Do you have something to say, Ms. Knopf?
I was just wondering on that credit rating, because I was noticing, and then you hit the point. We're at A3 now. Where is it that we want to go? Because I thought I'm going to finally go higher, but-
Our financial policies, the goal is the best rating, and I think Mr. Hartley and Mr. Mumpower can remember, when we were developing that policy, we talked about what's our goal. And even though at BAA2, it seemed forever way, the goal for the city of Bristol is to be AAA, the highest rating. So we do have work to do.
Yeah. Yeah, we've still got-
Yeah, I mean, while that's great cause for celebration, I think everyone would agree. There's, there's a lot of work still that lies ahead of us, but it, it is amazing. When you look at it that way and sit, kind of step back and see where you were and where you're at now, and it didn't, we didn't get there easily either, so.
I'm curious at one number. Can you go back to that slide on the lodging and meals? What was the, the three-month time period there? What, what's the total gap add up to be? Those two graphs you had, where it separated?
My computer did a couple. Let me get the graph.
Just the graph. Right there. Okay, there's meal. There's, okay. So what, what's that, what's that gap delta between the blue line and the orange line starting in March? What's all that add up to be?
It's about $110,000.
Doesn't ask me. He always asks percentages. He normally doesn't ask me the number. Hold on just one second. I'm sorry.
That's about, that's about $60,000, $70,000 a month average, probably, isn't it?
What about May?
Well, if you, you know, because you got May is about-
May was about 30,000.
May is about 100,000, right? 140 to 40, the gap, right?
Yeah.
Because I don't have my glasses on. I'm-
Well, it looks like about 90 to-
Looks like the May dots at 140, and the May orange dots at 40,000. Is that, is that right?
It's probably about 30 for the orange and about 138, 137.
So it's about 100 grand, yeah. And the difference between April is about, what, about 40,000?
I think the difference in April was about 50,000. The difference in May is about 120,000. And then the difference in June was the difference between 118 and 86. Randy can do that in his head.
So it's 30. So it's about- So it's about one fifty divided by, it's about fifty thousand dollars a month average, right? So that's a six hundred thousand dollar a year problem, right? If that was to continue. But you can see it's turned now, right? It's bottomed and it's turned up, so that's good. And what was the meal?
The meals for May was a little less than two hundred thousand dollars, and for June it was.
Next slide.
For June, it was the difference in four fifty-four and three sixty-four, so ninety thousand.
So ninety, and what's, so what's that average add to be over that three months? A hundred and twenty-five thousand a month?
The average is about one fifty.
Okay, so between the two, two hundred thousand a month, right? Two point four million is what that would project to for a whole year, right? The gap.
And we reduced the budget this year. We added admissions, which is not a significant dollar amount, but it's still one of those indicators, about two point five million. We reduced it for the year.
So you can see how bad it can be then, right? If it extended out for, if it comes back again, you're looking at that much a quarter.
Absolutely.
Any further comment? All right, well, again, we thank you for the presentation and for all your hard work. All right, we'll move now to the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of council?
Moved to approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Osborn, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Clerk, call the roll.
Hey, I got a question before we call roll. That meeting I was laid at, and I had to take a business call, do I vote or do I not? That would be eleventh, the one you had upstairs early, remember? Do I abstain or do I? Vote yes, because I was, I came in kind of halfway or whatever. I couldn't certify the meeting. I know, but I couldn't certify the meeting. So she put me on there as absent, so what do I do?
You should pull that out.
Pull that one out.
Pull that one out and vote on the.
So you pull that eleventh out.
Can you amend your motion?
Let me withdraw my motion, make a new motion, that we approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of the August eleventh minutes, which would be voted on separately.
Second.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, except for the August eleventh minutes. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes. Okay, now we will approve the minutes of the August eleventh, two thousand and twenty meeting. I have a motion.
I moved to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Abstain.
Osborn?
Yes.
Wingard?
Abstain.
Hartley?
Yes. All right, being no further business, we stand adjourned.